March eighteenth, twenty twenty four, meeting of the Bellingham Select Board. I invite you to please rise as we do always with the start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Ladies and gentlemen, we have some multiple things on the agenda, so we need to just take care of some housekeeping items. The first is an open public hearing. The Bellingham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty four at seven P M. The National Senate R K meeting, at which time Larry Spazato, town clerk, will discuss local election requirements soon to chapter ninety-two of the Acts of twenty twenty-two, the Votes Act, and whether the town will vote to adopt out of certain non-mandatory features such as voting by mail and in-person early voting in municipal elections. Signing of police officers at polling locations as well as polling hours will also be discussed. For the sake of other things on the agenda, I would entertain a motion to defer the start of that or. Second, first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? The second part of the seven o'clock, we had the pleasure tonight of welcoming the fire department as we do periodically for penning ceremonies. All Massachusetts state representatives like sort of scheduled to be here. Chief.
Good evening, everyone.
You surprised me, Mike, by being on that side.
Again, thank you for this opportunity, uh, thank you to the folks in the audience, thank you to everyone at home. We started a tradition about eight months ago, pinning all of our new people and people who will be promoted. Tonight, we want to follow through with that again. We have three personnel tonight that we'd like to bring forward, introduce to the board and pin as well. So if we're ready, the first member we'd like to bring up is firefighter paramedic Tim Cole. Tim joined the department in January of this year. Tim King was a transfer from another department and we were very fortunate to get Tim. Tim has twelve years of paramedic in eight years as a firefighter. Tim is going to be pinned tonight by his wife Jill, making his two little girls as well, too. It's okay. Oh, this is good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is Corey Lemon. Uh, Corey's name might ring a bell to a couple. Corey worked for us a couple of years past, uh, had left, and I'm proud to say realized the grass wasn't greener on the other side. Corey came back to us in February. Corey's been with us for a couple of months now. Uh, tonight also, a good friend of mine, uh, his dad, Todd Lemon, who's the police chief in Auburn. Todd's gonna be pinning Corey today. Corey, Todd.
It's okay. Corey just told me about this this morning at five thirty-three. There's a good chance he is gonna have a staff. He coincidentally pinned me when I got, uh, when I made police chief a couple of years ago, so thank you very much.
Next up, last but not least, is Ben Potenski. Ben came to us, uh, back from in August, um, new paramedic at that point, uh, came right to us out of medic school. Unfortunate, Ben just graduated recruit, um, three weeks ago. Uh, Ben is being pinned tonight by his mom, Deborah, so come on up, please. Uh, he has a citation for Ben.
Ben, congratulations. Thank you to Billy and welcome to the fire department. We've been blessed for many years. We'll be praying for you as we do. Commonwealth Massachusetts, be here known to all, the Massachusetts House of Representatives, offices in service. Congratulations to Ben Jimmin Potenski, recognition of your success, successful graduation from Massachusetts firefighting academy and commitment to serve the Commonwealth. An entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses hope for a future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this, it's the sixth day of February that you graduated, right? Ronald Mariano, Speaker of the House, and offered by Michael J. Soder, uh, state representative. Congratulations.
Again, thank you for the time. I really appreciate it. Thank you to everyone, uh, in attendance for tonight. Chief, thank you for coming out, uh, you know, short notice. We'll work on that. Thank you for the great show for our five fifty members. Larry, you need to do your business now, so. You want all three, Larry? Would you like all three at one time?
Thank you. I appreciate this time.
That you will betray the integrity or the character of the department with the trust of the residents of Bellingham. That you will train all individuals with dignity and respect and ensure that connections are dedicated to ensuring the safety of the community. The preservation of human life. That you will always hold yourself accountable for this. And then your actions may be bound by the Charter and by laws of Bellingham, constitutions of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the United States of America.
For folks who may be zooming in or watching on cable late right now, what's happening is our town clerk is swearing in and having the department sign into the register for the town. Again, the danger to avoid them shake this. Corey and Ben, thank you for being here and for the turnout of the department as well and Rep. Soder as well. Thank you very much. Have a great night. Alright, so, uh, again, we are zooming this meeting and we're also on cable eight. So for those people in attendance, the next part of our agenda, uh, is a new part of our segment. It's listed as Citizens' Input. Members who are interested in, uh, residents who are interested in being part of the start of our meeting can reach out to Hillary Alley at H A L L I E at bellinghamma.org. Our agenda is set three days in advance, but residents may also join us. We have such a case, uh, Steve Goyette, after the agenda was set, has expressed interest in joining us. Steve, if you would like to join us.
Would you like me to speak from the bleachers of Compton?
Actually, so that people can see, um, the, the way this segment is set up, if there's anyone else who wanted to speak, we had set it up at seven, it's seven oh five, so if someone else does have a question, we can address that after Mr. Goyette.
I appreciate the time. I, I think as, uh, everyone knows, I started a petition not long ago that would initiate a special town meeting where a vote would be, uh, taken to put a moratorium on any future warehouses in the town. We've received the two hundred plus signatures. Larry told me that they were certified, so I am here to formally request a special town meeting so we could, uh, set up a time and a date to vote on.
There was a question, I believe, that when you and I talked to Annis about the exact language and the law firm, or someone has vetted the language that we would be voting on?
No, that, that's for the, uh, another matter. Their article that they put together is what will be, uh, by petition. The board would have to hold the meeting forty, uh, no more than forty-five days from the date that the, uh, signatures were certified. So no later than forty-five days from today. Well, do you remember what the posting requirement is to have it advertised prior to the meeting, prior to the special town meeting?
I don't.
Yeah.
You mean in the paper?
Right.
Oh, I think, um, I think it's just ten days before.
So it's, it's no, no more than forty-five days. Uh, Larry?
I couldn't hear what you were saying.
I was saying that, I, I was saying, I was saying that the, uh, town meeting has to be held no more than forty-five days from tonight.
There is a requirement for a public hearing as well.
Yeah. Right.
And that requires two advertisements.
Two advertisements, okay. So.
So does the forty-five days start tonight or the forty-five days start from the planning board?
Well, no, it should start from tonight because it's when they're, it's actually.
Right.
Right.
So is there anything that I need to do?
When you deliver the signature.
Okay, yeah.
It's only once he delivers at the forty-five days.
To the certify.
So six, forty-five days out would be no later than June. I'm sorry, May second? That's a Thursday night? Let me, is that going to be here? And so we're at the eighteenth, so I just went out six weeks and three days, so the twenty-fifth, the first, the eighth, fifteenth, twenty-second, twenty-ninth, and the second is forty-five days out. May second, sorry.
Typically, do town meetings on a Wednesday, so you can do it the first. If you wanted to, I love to check availability with the. Go with the first and give the chairman the latitude to adjust it if necessary. That way we don't have to wait two weeks to, to schedule that, so we'll shoot for the first. First of May, and, um, if it needs to be adjusted, then the, the chairman has the latitude to adjust it to accommodate the school schedule, if that's okay with everyone.
Yeah.
Steve? Yeah, the, the more notice the better, just so I can get word out, you know, to those people that are interested in.
Yeah, I think the only question is whether there's any, uh, concerts or something that set up drama presentations that maybe already works, but I think that can be confirmed with the superintendent's office in one. And about scheduling with planning board.
We can go ahead and get that going, so obviously we'll have to do that, uh, either the first or second meeting. They have first or second meeting and if, alright, we can, so. So last question, do we know, uh, when we will know a date by, a firm date by?
So relative to the date availability at the school would be probably two days from now.
Okay.
If not tomorrow afternoon. And then planning board situation.
Okay.
Getting the schedule.
And the planning board will hold a public hearing on your article to, and then they, they will make a recommendation at town meeting, so go forward. But they'll notify you, uh, as to when that that hearing will be, they need the second and fourth Thursdays of the month. And what's the purpose of this as it relates to the special town meeting? The planning board? Yeah. Uh, planning board has a public, has to have a public hearing on any amendments to this. So it gives the public an opportunity to offer input, uh, on that, and then the planning board would offer a recommendation. Do you know if at that hearing that I am able to speak? Yes. You would, I, I would imagine they'll ask you to present. Okay. The, you're the petitioner, so they ask you to present the, um, the article and give some information, whatever information you want to provide on that. And then they open it up on their own conversation and public comment. Okay.
This, this is where text messaging is good. I get a message that the auditorium is available first.
Well, you're lucky you did that because otherwise that's.
It is. It is. So we thank you. And is there anything we have to vote relative to that to put into the minutes or is that?
I think just vote to.
Accept it.
To schedule a special town meeting to, uh, hear the petitioner's article on May first.
Motion to schedule a public town meeting for Mr. Goyette's petition.
Special time.
Special time.
Second.
First and second, and any further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, or zero? Alright, so the next step will be, uh, getting on the planning board's agenda.
Okay.
Congratulations on getting over two hundred signatures.
So May first, uh, what time?
Seven, sorry.
Yeah, we, we'll do later just because of the darkness and, uh, activities at the school. So.
Seven thirty, like the way you do every town meeting is at seven thirty, so probably it would be the best.
So the planning board will be in touch with you as far as, uh, that's right. Okay, you can always call us, too. Okay.
So you're gonna, he's gonna have to drop that off to me though, correct? The, um, his, his petitioned article.
I think Larry has.
Oh, Larry has it? You have to deliver it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Also, we might get it and, and deliver it.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
And I saw you raise your hand. Was there another, something else?
He wants to talk during the public hearing for the voters, uh, the vote.
Uh, having satisfied the other two motions of the agenda items at seven o'clock, we will now return to the seven o'clock public hearing. Larry, would you like to join us? Are there something specific that we have to consider though?
Yes, so, um, I sent you some information at the end of last meeting. With some numbers, um, so that you could have something to work with. Um, I've also polled the board registrars because it's something that needs to be done. And basically, um, the opinions that came up were.
Sorry to interrupt. We need a microphone close at the end. You want this one?
Not this one.
I just want to make sure that people.
Yep.
So, um, basically, there was a split. The two people, um, voted for mailing ballot and not early voting and two were more inclined to vote if there had to be anything for early voting. Um, an abbreviated version of early voting. Because we have not the latitude to.
Can you speak up because they can't hear you? Sorry.
Can you repeat that again, Larry? I'm sorry. What you just said, you pulled the, um.
The registrars?
Yeah.
Two opinions were that we should have early voting by mail, mail-in ballots and no early voting in person. And two said that if we had to have anything, it could be, um, early voting, but an abbreviated version because we do have the latitude to, um, create whatever scheduling we want for the voting. We don't have to have like a week's worth or two weeks' worth. We could do two days, one day's worth. And we could do just mornings or whatever. Um, we do have that latitude. So, um, which could, if we did that, it would definitely cut back on the class. So it's really kind of, um, what the thoughts are of this board and.
So am I correct in saying that the question before the board is whether we do a formal mailing announcing that early voting exists in lieu of someone just asking for an absentee ballot?
No, I will work because this is a state election year. We already have twenty-one hundred people that have asked for ballots. So that twenty-one is a given, twenty-one hundred, so they would automatically get a mailing out. And the only thing I can tell you is that the idea of how many are gonna come back is another story because even with the primary, people are very interested in the presidential race and so on and so forth, but in the primary, we've only got about thirty-five percent back. So we have to send them out, but we didn't get them back. So, um, I mean, that, that may or may not weigh into this, the, the idea of doing this or not. Um, but we would automatically have to send it out to that twenty-one hundred, and that's today. The cards are still coming in for the rest of the year, so whatever we end up with before the date would be the number that we would have to send out, even if somebody does it, like, you know, on June first, we'd still have to send it out.
So no matter what, we have to send out twenty-one hundred ballots?
Be the minimum right now.
If we to have.
If we both have it, yes, okay, if we both.
If you opt out, then we don't have to give that. And, and as far as early voting goes, we again can make the schedule up as, as we please.
Questions from the board?
Um, I, I, I don't really have any questions because I kind of been there, done that with this because I did it as the town clerk. Um, I just think that what I've gotten from the residents that I've talked to and the residents who have contacted me about this, one of the most important things that they wanna have is they wanna have the option to have their ballots mailed to them, whether it's that when they say ballots all year, I want every election, they want it for the local as well as the the states, and I think that that would be, uh, might be a benefit for our local elections because we know that local elections tend to not be as great as we would like them to be. You know, unless you have a huge issue going on and then everybody jumps out to vote, but I think having the mail-in ballots, which people really want, is, uh, might be a plus for us to have a better, uh, recording of votes for, for our local elections. I feel that it's, uh, something we should do. I, you know, people want the, the ballots at home and the state has said, we want you to do mail-in, you know, mail-in ballots to, to people at home and so I, I don't see a problem whether to do the early voting, the in, inside early voting for our local election. No, I think that's ridiculous. You should not do that. Crazy to spend that type of money to set up for a local election to do early voting, but I definitely think we need to have those ballots sent out to the people who have requested them. I think that's very important.
I just want to clarify one thing. Um, absentee ballot will be as usual.
Right.
Regardless of what we do here. So just so you know.
Right.
Is it gonna be same as absentee ballot, just send it out? Is that what you're trying to say?
That's right. Absentee ballot has to be requested, whereas the mail-in is anyone who's requested would be obligated.
Mr. Little Bashin was suggesting that we send it out to everybody.
Well, anyone who's requested it.
Anyone who's requested, okay.
You know, a lot of people request, um, they, when the, they fill out the pod, it's like, I want a ballot for all of elections. Meaning also that your local election, so they, they, if those people request it, they should have. I don't think we should be not sending them out. And, and as we go down the line here on the little paper, um, the other thing was, uh, motion to hold the polling hours. I think polling hours should be seven A M. to eight P M. We shouldn't be changing that or deviating from that at all. That's what's been in this town for seventy-five years. And yes, during COVID, it was, it was a test to, you know, to do it, and it was, I, you know, I congratulate everyone who worked during COVID, who had to deal with elections because it was not an easy task to do, and I understand that, but we're not in COVID and, and our polls should be open for the, the residents who wanna vote at seven A M., be it five, ten, fifteen, it doesn't matter. They wanna vote at seven A M. and we should do it, and we've always done it. So I feel very strongly about that.
Anything else from the table before we go to the public?
I have one question. Did we even look at it? You know, it's, um, what's the turnout rate? You know, it's, uh, when we open early and then when we open later, you know, it's, um, like, you know, it's from the seventy-eight turnout, then you know, it's, uh, what was it before that? It was, uh, ten to twelve to.
We just knew it till late.
Yeah.
And we, we did get more votes.
Okay.
But it was, you know, it, it depends on the contests actually as well.
It is conceivable that we have uncontested races, correct?
Yeah. And like that.
Okay.
I mean, I struggle with incurring costs for uncontested races, but. So anyone from the audience who would like to come in? Having seen your name, raise your hand earlier, would you please identify yourself and tell us what you think?
Sure. I'm Joyce Notting from, uh, before Chamberlain Road.
And your thoughts?
I'm deeply concerned about the, uh, board's pattern and practice of limiting access to voting, uh, in early elections. Every town around here, Blackstone, Franklin, Norfolk, Medway, has mailed in ballots for local elections. I think it's outrageous that that is not happening here.
This is.
I'm sorry?
This is the first time that this issue has been brought before this board.
I wrote to you last October and you never responded. Uh, additionally, I called in January and spoke with Hillary and asked if I could bring it to the board. And she said this was my first opportunity to. So my concern is that before this, there was never any discussion about the limiting of hours. It was just done, so I don't think the board has a strong interest in, uh, expanding the voting in town. Additionally, um, I'm concerned that after in the June fifth meeting that you had, the early voting was canceled. And that was the only, uh, limit to access. The town clerk on his own, apparently, canceled mail-in voting. I don't, I have the minutes right here.
I bet that's the case. Let Larry respond when you're finished.
Well, okay, I have the minutes of that meeting and it was not voted on, so I'm happy to give anybody the minutes of the meeting here. So I guess I'm, I'm concerned about the pattern in the town of, uh, for some reason. I don't know whether it's too much trouble or whatever, of limiting access. Additionally, I noted that handicap parking signs are not out at the polling place at the high school. They're just not put out and haven't been for a number of years. There is a handicap walkway down to the polling place, but it doesn't meet state requirements. It doesn't have a railing, so if the people who are in a walker or wheelchair and are going downhill, they may be in for quite a ride. they may be in for quite a ride. Um, re-hand railings need to be there as well as handicap parking. So it's it's just generally a a feeling I get from the board that there's very little interest in voting or expanding voting.
Thank you.
Um, if you're interested, I can give each of you a copy of the minutes of the January, I'm sorry, June fifth meeting to that demonstrates that there was no vote to cancel mail-in voting.
Larry, can you comment on?
Yeah, first of all, it's not canceling anything.
It's, excuse me, Larry? I can't.
I said it's not a matter of canceling anything. It's an option that the town has, number one. Number two, we have gone over the June fifth meeting. We've gone over that in quite a number of times. I supplied you with every bit of information that you asked for. There was a little bit of a glitch because it wasn't actually recorded as such on the, in those minutes. But the vote was taken. The town clerk did not unilaterally make the decision.
Well, as we know, if it's not in the minutes, it didn't happen.
I understand, but it did happen. Um, and the, as far as the handicap signs go, yes, the handicap signs were not up. They're going to be up. We had a meeting. We ordered, we're ordering new signs, and the reason they weren't there is because this is the DPW now. They, for whatever reason, they couldn't find the signs. There was a change in personnel and somebody put them somewhere. They finally decided that they had gone to some school thing. I don't know, wherever they're, wherever they keep their signs.
It has to do, uh, they haven't been out for a number of elections, Larry, not just the past one.
Well, that's all part and parcel of the whole thing, but that's, that's actually the GPW that is. So we we met and we remedied that. I'm going to have our signs there.
Yeah, we did have a uh, meeting with the director after Larry and I talked and put together a nice schematic to show everything should go, so it should never be a problem again. So that that should be rectified.
Ideally, the bus lane should be the handicap access and not have the parking.
I will, I'm going to be very frank. I don't believe it meets standards either, but because there's not enough parking and it's not as as sensible as it should be. But that's something that we're going to have to work on also.
It's always been the bus lane. The handicap signs have always been there forever and ever and ever.
Until they went missing.
Until they went missing, I guess, yeah.
So obviously, we need to do a better job on the handicap access.
It's going to be a residue this time for sure.
More important, I think, more generally is is the um, mail-in voting um, which every, every town, even Blackstone um, has. Why we don't is I have no idea. I'd love to, love to find out.
And you want to go next? Just the name for the record and.
Yes, Ed Ed Featherston fifty-four Laurel Lane, Bellaheim resident for almost forty, forty years now. Um, I wanted to talk in in support of making sure we do continue the mail-in voting. I'm one of those people that asked for all of the ballots. My wife is one of those people that asked for all the ballots. We still will go down, but we want to be able to have the option to be able to do it because our work schedules fluctuate and there are times that we can get there and it could be last minute and there are times that we can't. So having that option is important. One of the other options for me i- in uh, Minnesota Bastion had touched on it was maintaining our seven to seven hours. Um, the last general that we had that changed, I went down. I hadn't realized that it changed. I went down when I was available because my work hours did not make it so I could get there for the hours that it had been changed to and I was just used to seven o'clock in the morning and I can show up and I can vote. And that didn't happen. Um, I would think we want to consider that also, given the the amount of people that will be adding to the town in the various apartments and everything that have been built because of the train station. I mean, that's part of what the state has encouraged. So a lot of those people that might potentially be voting are getting on the trains and not getting home in time for the seven o'clock closing, and their only option would be to get there for seven when it opens up. So I think that's something we should consider also.
Just for the recording, I think the hours were changed to twelve to eight. Now, the the normal is seven to eight.
Seven to eight, right.
But but a- and as far as the early voting to 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 the other point, I mean, for a local election, that does seem like overkill, but I think the mail-in and the hours, one of the things we've talked about for years in this town is trying to encourage more turnout. And so making it easier for people to be able to vote, especially for the local election, because we all know what our turnouts look like in the local elections here, and anything that could help increase that number even a little bit is a positive from my perspective.
Larry, if I could ask just for clarity, if someone were to mail in their votes, um, is it a postmark issue or versus an absentee ballot re- request?
It turns out.
The old way it used to be, if you knew you were going to be out of town, you would request an absentee ballot that has to be requested by X date.
There's a, it's a different application and it's actually a different ballot. Um, and the postmark is, the deadlines have to be set up. And and there's more of an opportunity with absentee balloting, you can vote longer. The cutoff for mail-in ballots is a little bit shorter.
Because it has to be received prior to.
No, it has to be received by eight o'clock tonight.
Night before.
No, of the election.
Of the election.
Yeah.
And when the post comes.
For absentee?
For both.
Oh.
But obviously, the mail post office is delivering to us at four, one o'clock in the in the day, no.
Earlier than that, but they will bring ballots over during the day. But I'm going to tell you, that's, that was a real problem with this last election. We got cards, the individual cards that came in requesting. Um, this is an example. We got two thousand of them, you know, close to two thousand, um, in a bucket one day that had been postmarked in January and we didn't get them till February fourteenth. Once we mailed them out, you know, and even the ballots, once we mailed them out, we have no control over them. It's the post office that has to control. So um, and that's another thing that people have to understand because some people even didn't even get them at all. And then they came to vote. And of course, it was our fault because, but you know, once we mail them out, that's, we lose all consciousness of them, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I said, we'll come back to you, but just so everyone can speak once and then I'll circle back.
It's just I can't hear him.
Okay, um.
I have too much I could do about.
But I'm sorry, you're, that's, that's fair.
Does this, does this just go?
If that. Yeah, I mean, if you could just win respond. Mr. Martinez?
Yes, uh, Don Martinez, three thirty-four Maple Street. Uh, just a couple of questions. Larry, I'm curious, you know, Mr. Featherston talked about the apartments. Has there been a a large increase in voter registration in the last couple of months?
There's been from the new areas?
Yeah, yeah, that's great. Okay, that's, I'm just, yeah, the other thing I just want to bring up in the, in the last primary, um, I received. Well, let me just step back. You're all aware that the Medway Post Office and the Bellaheim Post Office is combined, right? Well, that's caused an increase in problem with me getting the wrong mail or mail that's significantly delayed. In the last primary, two weeks prior to the vote, I received a a piece of mail from a Medway address, for a Medway address and for a Farm Street address. I brought that and I just dumped them back in the post office. My concern is that we don't have enough integrity in mail-in vote. I I I understand we need to open hours. It's it's been but really, you can't rely on the postal service, you know, because your your chain is only as strong as its weakest link. Our weakest link in mail-in voting is the current postal service. I'm not saying Bellaheim Postal Service is not any good. What I'm saying is that historically, uh, it's a problem. And Mr. Larry just brought it up, Mr. just brought it up that we have a problem. I mean, for me to get a piece of mail that was, should have gone to a Medway address and another piece of mail that should have gone to Farm Street and they show up in my mailbox. I mean, the average person might have just thrown them away in the trash, where I actually went to the post office and dropped them back in the slot. So I just think that the board needs to think about, and and I respect the opinions here a lot, but if for seven to eight and then and then early voting, I think that's enough opportunity for a local and a federal and a state election to go seven to eight with plenty of advertisement and early election here. I know it's a pain. I know it's costly. But there's also, to me, I've seen enough elements of, I'm concerned with fraud and with a lot of different things. I don't want to get into a debate, but I'm just not in favor of it whatsoever, and and I know other people feel the same way as I do.
Um, uh, Mr. Hemway?
I agree with Mr. Martinez. Uh, Ken Hemway, thirty-nine Weatherfield Road. Early voting, absentee voting, and let's make, let's get back to one day, an election day. We've made elections a seasonal event. They go on for two months and we've heard of ballot harvesting. We've heard of nursing homes where people are voting and people prey on those people and it's called ballot harvesting. They force them to sign ballots. There's so much fraud in this mail-in voting. Let's go back to one day, early voting and absentee voting and clear this all up.
Was there anyone else who wanted to make an initial comment? Larry?
I also just wanted to clarify, um, because Mr. Martinez, I know, said about state elections and federal elections, we have no option there. The only place we have an option is with the local election. Thank you.
Ed, did you raise your hand again?
Yes.
Yep.
Um, just to address some of the points that were brought up around that, um, the first one is understand that absentee ballots also get sent out in the mail. My kids went to college and got their absentee ballots in the mail. I have yet to hear of one substantial case of mail-in voter fraud in Massachusetts. There's lots of concerns about it. I have yet to hear of one valid case. Um, I asked our town clerk, have we had any cases of voter fraud with the mail-in ballots that would add in town? And I understand people's concerns about it. But being concerned about something that isn't happening, to me, is not a reason to stop doing this. That's my personal opinion.
Mr. Soder, yes.
Just as somebody who is part of the law, um, the one thing, the reason why we gave a local option for the board of selection to make this decision is because in the federal and state elections, the 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 period of time for certifications is different. So you have time for those ballots to come in and it's a close election, those ballots can come in. You can contest it. You can open those ballots. You have a, you have the reason we did the local ballot mailing, and I'm not, either way, whatever you decide to do here, it's your call. And that's why we gave you the option. Part of the reasoning for the local election was an option is because you you don't have that same span of certification. So if you have a very close town election, you get those ballots at seven fifty-nine from the post office. They decide, oh, jeez, we just got these in, we're we're going to bring them. Or they get here at eight oh one or whatever. There could be, you know, you could be back and forth and you have two hundred ballots and it's a close town election. You could have, you know, we, you've got some issues there. That's why it was a local option to do because it is a lot of extra cost versus in state elections and and um, federal elections, there's a lot of cost there. But that, those are the reasons why we did it. So just keep that in mind is why we did that auction, gave you the power to do so because it there is a major cost factor. It's a little bit different than the general and why not. And I will just say, this last primary across the state, hurling mail-in voting, mail-in voting across the state because it was a state election was higher. Now, obviously, March, it's a time of year. A lot of people travel, so it was an include. Mail-in voting in federal, so.
I I just had a question about the law. Mr. Soder brought up an interesting point. Um, the, let's just as an example, hypothetically, it's eight, ten PM and voting is closed and the postal service runs over with a big bucket of ballots that Larry hasn't had a a chance. Are those null and void? They can't, they, can they still be counted as votes or at eight o'clock after, that's it? And even if it's a close race, those don't count toward a recount if somebody asks for a recount?
Tell you, if you take, you take it to court, it's a close race and you guys have a close race and you decide to do a recount? Court, is Secretary of State's going to rule it? You're going to be in court. They're going to rule it. The Attorney General will probably tell you that, yes, you've got to accept those ballots, even if they came into the.
So, so if the, if the town clerk said, hey, no, we're not going to count them, then you can still go to court.
One one observation.
Who's the town clerk?
One observation is our post office is closed at five o'clock at night. There's no one there to deliver ballots at six o'clock or seven o'clock.
Generally get in are people dropping them off, and they do drop them off. Whereas they drop them off, we have someone here um, processing them. And then whoever's at the, that's why I go back and forth all the time. It's a whole bringing back ballots back and forth. So they get processed here and then processed and put through the tabular at the polls. So for the most part, unless, you know, even if it arrives at eight, if say, let's say it arrives and stamped in at seven fifty-five, it will still be counted that night. It's just a hand count. So now granted, if if there's, you know, thousands of them, then that's going to be long handed.
And and I just have another question. This isn't, this is the question. So could you come back here and there's a a dozen ballots here? Um, and where where are those ballots? Are they in your office? Some dropped them off because you're, this is closed, right? Building's closed?
There's always somebody here.
Okay, it's late o'clock at night? So great. I'm, so they get dropped off and then they hand them to you. How how do we know that? And and I know you wouldn't do this, Larry, but how do we know? Is there somebody with you to make sure that the twelve that you grabbed or the twelve that show up at the high school were for protection of you? I don't want someone to say, hey, there was thirty, now there's only twelve. You know what I'm saying?
The, the.
Just we want the integrity of the vote to be spot on.
They get stamped in here. They also get heated to a McDonald's state system.
Okay.
That they can return. And return it as as a ballot. Um, then they go into the safe until we start to count and they would be hand counts. Anything that doesn't get put through at the polls is a.
Okay, thank you.
So giving an example on Douglas that just happened in the primary, the post office. There was the next day, races got certified because the the post office, you had a postmark with the right time on it to be here. That gets counted. So there is that, like Mr. Martinez and Mr. Hamley mentioned, there is that opportunity for, that it didn't happen and the town clerk was closed. She'd have to come, they have to come back in to redo their certified counts. It was a little bit of a, so we didn't get the certification. It's almost three thirty. We didn't get the notice. It wasn't certified. It was three thirty in the afternoon until those races, and it really wasn't a huge turnout. It was just those mail-in ballots came in with stamps before eight o'clock on election day.
And one other thing, um, last time around in twenty twenty-two, we were counting ballots like ten days beyond election day. This year, they, I don't know if they're going to do it for the general election, but for the primary, they cut it off at eight o'clock. So depending on that, that's another factor. If they're going to allow us to count beyond, then, you know, we have more time to count, then those are all hand counts.
And and I just want to point out again, all of the scenarios we're talking about can also happen with absentee ballots. My my children, like I said, when they were away for college, had absentee ballots sent out to them. They were both out of state, mailed them back. If we have town registered voters who are members of the military, the absentee ballots would be mailed to them and they would be mailed back. And all of the scenarios we're talking about from from a postmark perspective would still be in play from that perspective. Like, um, I just have a statement to make. As somebody who, while I was in the service, used absentee voting, uh, the numbers are probably significantly less for the absentee ballot than they are for the general, your regular mail-in voting. Am I wrong in that assumption?
Well, military ballots are handled differently.
Right, like the same with with college, with college.
Yeah, people in college, yeah.
I mean, but you, what do you have, maybe twenty of them?
Oh, yeah, there's not that. Well, no, it's maybe twenty.
Right, but compared to the twenty-one thousand, twenty-one hundred that go out, um, I am, I I I know people are probably going to be happy. I am not a supporter of of mail-in voting. If you wouldn't put five hundred dollars in an envelope and mail it to yourself, why would you put a ballot? That's one of the most sacred um, acts that you have as as an, as American is voting. Um, you know, I know this is just a town election, but it it it's an election and town elections actually affect you more than than national elections or state elections.
True.
So, um, I I know people aren't going to be happy, but I I'm outright saying I am not supporting mail-in voting for the the elections. No, I have nothing else.
Yes.
I've heard, um, people's objections about the mail-in voting, but the sta- statistics are that there is not a problem, we've heard all kinds of, um, whatevers, maybes, it could be. But in the local elections that we have had in the state, there hasn't been any problems with the mail-in voting, and I know because I've asked um, whether certification is another issue, if it comes in late, it can be certified. But according to the Secretary of State's office, I think mail-in ballots have to be, um, stamped by eight o'clock in the, the morning of the election. That's my. Okay, so, um, the fact that a mail-in ballot may show up at somebody's house that didn't order it or ask for it, or was misdelivered, doesn't mean that ballot is going to be illegally filled out and, um, so the responsibility still is on the person to make an honest, uh, uh, vote. Now, if there's a problem, uh, with people illegally voting, that nobody's reported, you know, that's another issue, but we don't have, we haven't had that, uh, problem.
Well, I, just to, in response to that, I don't know what you consider a problem, but we do have at least a hundred ballots that will return late and couldn't be counted. And the interesting thing is.
Couldn't be counted?
Could not be counted because they arrived too late.
Okay.
Well, that to me is a problem because the, the post office didn't get them here.
Okay, if they're not stamped, then they're not.
They are stamped, they're stamped, and it shows that they were, they came in too late. So they're not counted, so that, to me, that's a bit of a problem, because you, you know, that's a fair number of votes that you're losing out on. Now, the other thing, and, and again, I don't want to get into any debates or anything either, but I'm gonna bring this up because I think it's pertinent to, to what the discussion that we're having now. When you say that ballots don't end up, I, I have people that have gotten several cards, they've reported that they've gotten several cards, and could, if they wished, get other ba, more ballots, but they don't. They, but the more important thing is, and this goes way back to registration, the, and I say this all the time, our workload has changed dramatically. And one of the places it has changed is in the registration of, of voters. When, in the past, when people went to the R M V, they had a choice whether or not they wanted to select a uh, to be registered to vote. Then they were given the opportunity to omit that option and say, you know, I don't want to be registered. Now they just automatically get registered, and automatic means automatic. Every transaction that goes through your R M V and other agencies gets registered. So when you go to the R M V to renew your license, we get the registration for you, and then we have to go, which makes our list very long, and we have to go in and say that it's a duplicate. Um, they also had a problem with changing party designation with that, but they corrected that problem. But the issue is, we have already had seven people come forward, we have one just today, which would be number eight, to say that they were registered to vote unknowingly, and that they are not eligible to vote. So, that's just a way that, you know, when you, when you say that, you know, there's not in any reports of fraud and so on and so forth, we don't necessarily know, these people are being registered automatically, and.
Are what?
Automatically, okay, and so they don't even know they're being registered, and then when the cards are sent out, they get a card. So, some of us, some of them come back and tell us, and some people don't. So there, there's a potential there that we may not know about for quite a while.
So you're saying there's a potential to be registered improperly?
And voting, and ultimately voting.
I don't see where it goes to ultimately voting, because the responsibility is to make a, eh, an honest vote. Otherwise, you're voting illegally.
I think that's.
Correct, that's what I'm trying to say, but that may not show up for quite a time, you know.
I think we've heard a lot, um, I think the potential exists to mail to a nursing home, and someone gather up all the votes and mail them back. My personal feeling is that election day is election day, and if you do wanna, uh, vote early, that you have the option of absentee ballot, and I realize that sometimes we just agree to disagree on certain things.
There is no national home of value.
Huh?
There is no national homes in value.
I'm just saying, national, that's just a perspective. I would also say that over the past fifteen years that I've been on the board, um, multiple times, that there are races that are uncontested, and to say, I think it is an unnecessary expense, and I would be voting against advance mailing of voting, I am in favor of the others, but.
I think that, uh, that's, that's, that's really a mistake to do, because I feel that every person has the right to request a ballot. Whether it be a local election or a state election. So, somewhere along the line, we have to fine tune this, so whether it's, we make it so that people who want to have a ballot sent to their home has to request it in person for each election, which is what they think they're doing now, so obviously that doesn't work. Which, that's what the Secretary of State said, if you request a ballot for every, every election, you should get a ballot for every election. And I understand what you're saying about the registration and the cards, it is a nightmare, it's been a nightmare since Mr. Galvin decided it was a great idea, and you're right. We, you get a ton of cards from the registry of people who hit that check mark, and they said.
There's no check mark anymore.
No check mark, but, but they, they, they all say, oh, yep, we're registered, and they're already registered to vote, it's, it's been a nightmare for, for years. It, it, this is nothing new, and if you talk to town clerks, which I'm still in the association, and I do talk to them, it's a nightmare in every city and town, this is nothing new. How did they solve it, I don't know, maybe get rid of Bill Galvin, but that's my opinion. But, um, I really firmly believe that everyone should have the right to request a ballot to be mailed to their house if they want it. I don't care what your reason is, I don't care if you're sitting on your couch and you don't feel like driving your car down to the school, well then, you should, they should have the opportunity. And I don't think it should be just state elections or federal elections, it should be even our local elections. And I really firmly believe, my opinion, that you might get a better turnout if people have the opportunities to request their ballot at home, because they're not gonna make it in time to, to vote. And, and that's how I feel, and yeah, you could say putting five hundred dollars in mail is cuckoo, but to some people, this is important, and they want to be able to vote, and this is how they want to vote. And I, and I believe it's, it's, um, I, I think for your local election is not gonna be the cost factor as it is for the state and federal elections, and I think there's a way that you could maybe fine tune this. You know, I, I, I really believe that this is important, and I, I am one hundred percent behind, people should have the opportunity to select and vote at home.
I believe we've talked out the issue, I'll entertain a motion at this time to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, none, four oh. Uh, we have before us four recommended motions, um, we can take each one. First motion is a motion to conduct or not conduct early in-person voting for the municipal town election set for Tuesday, June fourth, twenty twenty-four, we have a motion one way or the other?
I, I'll motion not to do the early voting in person for the municipal town election, June fourth, two three four.
First and second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, none, or zero. Second motion is a motion to conduct or not conduct voting by mail prior to the municipal town election set for Tuesday, June fourth, twenty twenty-four, entertain a motion.
Motion to conduct the voting by mail prior to the municipal town election set for June, Tuesday, June fourth, two thousand twenty-four.
Since you're voting to, it probably.
To conduct, um, voting by mail.
A little caveat about financing it, just in case we need the money.
Understood. So.
I, I gotta.
Let's do, you, first, we have a second. Hearing none, or there another motion?
Motion to not conduct voting by mail prior to the municipal town election set for Tuesday, June fourth, twenty twenty-four.
I will second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Aye.
Three one. Third item is a motion to hold polling hours from, uh, I presume seven to eight.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to hold polling hours from seven A M. to eight P M. on Tuesday, June fourth, two thousand twenty-four at the Bellingham High School Gymnasium for the municipal town election.
Second, oh, and, and the, sorry, it's the funding.
That's funded.
That's in the budget.
That's in the budget, the mailing part is not in the budget. So we have a first, second by Mr. Shidne, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, none, four zero. And motion to allow for police presence in municipal town election set for Tuesday, June fourth, twenty twenty-four.
I have a question first.
Please.
So, what do you, you, you don't use more than a couple of police for the municipal election, right?
Maybe four.
Right, but you don't need that many for that. Right.
Well, well, actually, the school's gonna be closed, so we can use just a few.
Yeah, yeah.
I like to have somebody outside though, for, because of the handicap stuff.
Right, right. Motion to allow for police presence at the municipal town election set for Tuesday, June fourth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
First and second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, none. Moving on, Larry, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you all for coming.
I want to make one thing clear, you know, it's, I just make sure everyone understands, people, if they want to request the, um, absentee ballot, they can still do it, they can still vote, so just, you know, make sure everyone knows that.
And I think the people that already requested ballots, that's why.
And they, they're gonna receive still.
Still getting their ballots.
Requested, you will still go.
Oh, no? Oh, that does.
That was a question I had, for those of us that said, I want all mail-in ballots, including local elections.
That would not be part of it, because it's not an absentee ballot, the correct one.
So, so I would not get, even though I checked the box that said, local elections, all mail-in ballots.
The legislature said that it's a local exemption in that vote that we just took.
Is there some kind of notice gonna go out to people that check that off expecting it's gonna show up, and now it's not gonna show up? I mean, because when we all checked it off, we assumed it was gonna be coming.
Yep.
You better word it very carefully, because people are not gonna understand it.
Thank you. The next part of our agenda is, uh, fire personnel fiscal year twenty-five budget override discussion vote. Pete, would you like to join us?
Sure.
And anyone you'd like to vote for? Let me just, uh. Dennis, could I indulge, you indulge us with just a summary from the last meeting?
Sure, um, I think essentially, uh, the chief had requested within his budget six, uh, new uh, paramedic position, paramedic only positions, um, because, uh, there are two in the department uh, that were previously funded, two positions that were funded, and the board approved the new paramedic program, the, the chief is going forward and and, uh, hired, uh, two new paramedics, so that, that's in the works. Chief is looking for an additional six personnel. Along with outfitting those personnel, the budget number was, uh, just over six hundred thousand dollars to do that. And the discussion essentially was that there isn't a means, um, within current funding, within the revenues that we have to fund those positions. So if we were going to look to fund six positions, um, it would require, uh, additional funds, i.e. an override, uh, to present to, to the public, or cut six or seven hundred thousand dollars in existing positions from other departments. Um, there was discussion about increasing it to eight, uh, eight positions with benefits that would bring the cost up to almost a million dollars. Uh, the six with benefits would be right around, um, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars all in, so that's what we were, that's what we had. And you do have the different analysis, um, from the Department of Local Services, that shows the impact on the various, uh, the various amounts, yeah. As well as a ballot question, proposed ballot question from K P Law, which is very basic.
So, um, Chief, if you could fill in the blanks, just so, so I can just, people watching on T V or, um, zooming in around the audience, now, you and I have had some discussions, or just historically, that, uh, around about two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, the fire department went from four per shift, or six per shift?
Uh, five to six.
Five to six, at which time, uh.
Call, call volume was around one thousand nine hundred and fifty, give or take, and last year, we're still remaining at six personnel per shift. Then we, uh, did three thousand one hundred and ten calls last year.
Commercial, roughly, we've gone up eleven hundred and sixty calls, which in nineteen hundred is about a forty percent increase?
Roughly thirty-eight percent.
Thirty-eight percent. So over the last ten years, call volume's gone up thirty-eight percent, um, averaging about.
Nine runs a day.
About nine runs a day. And each run to the hospital consumes how much time?
Dependent, um, i- it's a double edged sword, um, it depends where we transport to. So if it's a local hospital, it could be probably an hour on a good day for turnaround time, depending if we have to, what we call, hold the wall. Very cautious how I say that, uh, with their emergency facilities getting overwhelmed with medical care, our personnel may be at the hospital for an hour and a half to two hours, holding the wall of the patient on a stretcher. Um, if there's a trauma, and it's on the north side, they've got to go to U Mass, if it's on the south side, you end up going to Rhode Island, you can guarantee at least a two-hour, uh, vacancy of an ambulance slash fire crew at that point. So, and what's happening more and more is we're having more and more doubles, triples, large group calls. Captain Provost worked, uh, Friday, and you had four calls right in a row. We had four calls in a row when it was really in Ableton Town, and, um, one called it being a patient refusal, so we were able to clear the resources up from there. Now, both ambulances are out, we have a two-person fire truck, that's not adequate coverage for a town of our size, town of our demographics. Uh, by adding the additional six personnel, that would give us eight personnel per shift, that's two medicolees per shift. Those two medicolees right now would run out of fire headquarters and staff ambulance number two, that would allow a captain and two, two staff a fire engine. And we would move one additional person down south, which is a whole nother area we haven't even really discussed, then we only have two personnel right now down south. And again, response times, if you've seen through our report, uh, you're looking at anywhere from eight to ten minutes from headquarters to get south. And if headquarters is out, and south is gonna come north, you're looking at any rough to sixteen minute response times. We need to cut these response times down, we need to be getting the proper level of care. The town has grown, the fire department has not, and the plan we're bringing forward is to try to add additional staffing to meet the current needs and demands on the services. So we would be adding one additional firefighter, um, if we, the two medicolees per group, we would ship one additional firefighter, we would run three out of the south station at this point, which right now we're only running two.
So you would still, two would go out on the ambulance, you would still have one person available to drive an engine as needed?
Correct. It's not the save all be all, but it's a little bit better than we're now, again, right now, south goes, they're just going on a run right now, I don't know what district is going out. Give me ten really one second, um, that's district two's that are up here, but if district one was going out, which would be south, you just lost your fire engine coverage and has to come out of headquarters. So again, you're looking at an eight or a ten minute response time, depending where in south we go. How far down to the, what's socket line, or over to the rental line that we go at this point?
Questions from the board?
No, so one fire, the adding one firefighter down south is essentially just a Band-Aid.
Correct?
It's, it's a step in the right, but it's a patch on the hole. Right, you know. We're, we're going to. Right, or incorrect.
I'm, I, I know exactly what I'm doing.
So Dennis, just for clarity, um, I'll use the terms direct and indirect costs, so the direct cost for six staff members is X, and the indirect cost being?
Right, so the direct cost of the six, as the chief had budgeted, it was six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, I believe.
That is correct.
The exact number was six.
The exact number was six hundred and twenty-nine dollars, the approximate indirect cost is twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, per employee.
So that, if we go with raw numbers, that's seven seventy-nine. But for, is there a roundness of numbers where it's?
I think seven, I think seven fifty, if you round it to seven fifty, you're, you're, you're fine.
And for, so for people watching in the audience, if we are looking at the seven hundred thousand level and the eight hundred thousand level. The cost on the average home is defined by the Department of Revenue. Would yield, uh, so eight hundred thousand. Yields eighty dollars and sixty-nine cents.
A year, yeah.
Right, and seven hundred thousand yields seventy-two twenty.
Yeah.
Yep.
So you're talking about seventy-six dollars on Bellingham's average home, obviously. The warehouses would pay significantly more, um, and depending on where you live in town, based on the value. The, the average is three sixty-eight?
Um, it says there that, yeah, I believe it's four and ten.
That four forty-five, right?
Yep, yep, if that's what it says, that's.
The average single-family home in Bellingham is valued at four twenty-four, six seventy-nine.
Right, yep.
And the cost would be, so if your home was valued in excess of four twenty-four, you would pay more than the seventy-six dollars, and if it was less. You would pay some factor less.
Correct, yeah.
The goal of the, or the role of the Bellingham Select Board is not to vote. For the override, the board, the board's role is to vote, to put it to the voters. So that being the case. I will entertain a motion to put to the voters an override of seven hundred and fifty thousand. Dollars to be voted at the June.
June election.
June election.
So votes.
Sorry.
The election you said.
At the June election.
No, gone about.
It's that for six. Is that for six paramedics already?
Six, it's for the higher, so instead of going for a million plus, we would take the lowest. Financial option and absorb any added costs as part of the budget from free cash. We have a first, and I don't think that's credit for the second, since the she gets the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Uh, gentlemen, we thank you for the work in putting this information together, Dennis and Heidi for, and Beth, if you're involved, and that's for the Department of Revenue, uh, that discussion. And again, for anyone watching, uh, this is the decision of the voters, we need to do some education as to where we were eleven years ago. Uh, where we are today, the size of the town, the number of runs, and more information will follow.
I would like to put that up to Michael, please, if anybody has any questions, anyone listening, um, please feel free to reach out to myself, the deputy captain Provost, um, and we'll do everything in our power to answer their questions and. Show what the extra sixth addition of people can do.
If memory serves me, I think that it obviously the, the million and a half, there was the forum of the school committee. Uh, I would ask, perhaps we would do, uh, information nights and make this room available to, um. Give a brief overview, so that we go to town meeting, at least people would have had multiple opportunities to hear it for the first time, we can do that.
I just think when it comes to what they're asking, well, you really can't put a price. On it, like getting an ambulance, getting properly trained individuals to your home at your, your most vulnerable moment, in, in your, in your time of need. You know, the, the, the extra property tax, you'll, you'll definitely know it's worth it.
Right.
You know, af- after one, if you have to call them once.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
That's, that's, that topic, you know.
I'm sorry, sir.
Yeah, I was saying that on that topic, you know, just to get a jump on that, it's obviously our main, um. Concern is obviously, we wanna, we wanna keep the residents safe and sound, as well as we wanna keep it safe and sound too, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's, I think this will be a. Good way that, that just to initiate it, it's a start a new program and then, you know, get it off the ground.
Wait, wait, you got to say it's, it's a step in the right direction.
It is absolutely a step in the right direction, and I would like to say, obviously, thank you to the board, to Dennis for the support and supporting this to move forward. It's definitely something we need for the residents to continue to offer a good service.
Absolutely.
That's a thank you.
The. We're all set with your part, but the next item on the agenda, uh, with a proposal by Mr. Frame, which I thought has a lot of value. And it ties into this, uh, for concerns about our seniors who may have issues.
Oh, yeah.
Um. We had previous discussions, the legislature had, uh, voted to authorize for us to increase. The senior tax workup from fifteen hundred to as high as two thousand. Um, and although my numbers may not be exact, I would throw out some information that we are, um, currently authorized to go as high as hundred and fifty thousand?
Yes, as far as funds that we have.
Right, and at the most recent use, uh, we utilized just over a hundred and thirty thousand. And that we had a little more than a hundred residents who were capped, I think it was ninety-eight, actually, uh, at the fifteen hundred. So the proposal that was offered by Dennis, where we had an additional eighteen-odd thousand dollars that went unused. That at this point, it would be beneficial to consider raising the senior tax workup to seventeen hundred dollars, which would be more than double. What a senior could potentially pay with the override. So if someone had a house valued at eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The two hundred dollars would cover the amount.
Override, yeah.
And that would utilize at least for the hundred plus who are capped now to. Use up the fif- one hundred and fifty thousand without cutting into our. Tax offer. So that was a proposal by Dennis.
I think he estimated that the cost of that's about twenty thousand dollars, every person that maxed out their senior tax workup took advantage of it, it would cost the town about. An additional twenty thousand dollars, that would be, you know, uh, raised when we set the tax rate, obviously, in the fall.
Yeah, and so where that program runs from December first to November thirtieth. Prior to setting the fiscal twenty twenty-six tax rate. We would probably do a better assessment as to how many residents were taking advantage of it, and whether some modification of the hundred and fifty thousand. Needs to be taken into consideration.
Hundred and fifty being our cap that we established for the senior tax workup sometime ago, intense, so.
Makes sense?
Makes sense to me.
So I would entertain a motion to increase the senior tax workup cap. From fifteen hundred to seventeen hundred, uh, effective. November, December first, which would still be in the tax year that the override proposal would be a part of.
So.
Okay.
I'll give my. So again, can I see a hint to your ear, just for clarity, this would be, uh, where the override is part of fiscal twenty-five. Uh, the senior tax workup would begin with the December first, twenty twenty-four, and run through November thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. Effectively, those would wash each other out.
I think it was a great proposal, I hope the board votes yes for it, and, uh, thanks to Dennis, because, let me tell you something. Seniors going in the market basket, they are getting clobbered at the prices there, they're getting clobbered with the prices of the gas station. I mean, they can talk, the Fed can talk all they want about prices and inflation going down, it. Those two issues are not going down at all, they're sorting, and it's hurting seniors, so hats off to the board and Dennis for considering this.
So we have a first on the table, a second, uh, all those in favor, aye, opposed, none, four, a little question.
I, I just have a question, last year in the board, when we increased the amount, we also talked about. Invoted to, uh, increase the minimum wage, I mean.
Right now, it's, it's.
It was to thirteen, yeah, now it's minimum wage, minimum wage in Massachusetts is now fifteen dollars an hour. Yeah, we just raised it to seventeen dollars, so essentially it's. She did seventeen dollars?
We didn't clarify that, we just, we said, well, we, we, we set it to seventeen hundred, we did.
Seventeen hundred, not seventeen dollars, yeah. Yeah, it's seventeen hundred dollars on a hundred hours, a hundred dollars.
The math is a lot easier to keep it at a hundred hours than it is to say fifteen dollars an hour, it's a hundred.
Our little calculators, I make them turn their phones off.
But it's, but my point, my point is.
Yeah, it's still a hundred hours.
That only works fifty hours, they're gonna get paid seventeen dollars an hour for those fifty hours. They get paid at that same rate.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
That's, we weren't.
So I would just amend, clarify the motion that it is to. Still cap the program at a hundred hours, but it changes the rate to seventeen dollars an hour.
That's.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, so good play, yes.
Does the vote still all agree, right?
Yeah.
Yes, there we go.
It's a great help, at least, that's what we can do, you know, it's, uh, I know we started discussing that, you know, earlier in the year, and then, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's finally, you know, we put on the pieces.
And the last time we voted on the senior tax workup, we, uh, voted to keep it in line with minimum wage.
Yes.
Right.
So thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Our other business tonight is the town administrator's recommendation to appoint and ratify a director of planning and engineering.
Yes, uh. Yeah, I'm very happy to present Mr. Robert Lucier. Everyone knows him as Rob, and Rob's been an associate member of the planning board for quite some time, um. We gotta get him on camera first.
Michael, help yourself.
Thank you.
Rob's a familiar face, he's been a part of, uh, several subcommittees in town. And he's had a great background, Rob, um, works for an engineering firm presently. And, uh, he does a lot of peer reviews for communities, uh, in the area, so he, he really knows what. Um, the planning and the land use departments are up against, um, when looking at development proposals, looking at plans. Rob's working towards his PE, um, which, which is great, has a certificate, his title five certificate, you have his resume, he has all this information, so. He'll kind of be our Swiss Army knife, he'll be able to help out down at D W. He'll be able to help out, uh, with the board of health, with, with Dylan, and, um, I told Rob, when I was recruiting him, I said. You're attending all of these meetings, now you'll be able to attend, and you're actually getting paid, it's a job, so, um. Rob has the wealth of knowledge, he's, he's from Bellingham, born and raised here, lives in Bellingham. It was interesting when I was looking at his resume, he did his Eagle Scout project in two thousand twelve at the North Community Building, and I remember that project. I told him I didn't remember Rob, sorry.
We're aging ourselves.
I remember the project, so he, he's been a part of the community, I just think it's a great fit, and I love the idea of. Having people that have a vested interest in the community being here with us, so we're recommending, uh, Rob Lucier to the position of, um, town, uh, planner slash engineer.
It requires a lot to step down from his current role.
As associate member of the planning board, yes.
Questions, if any?
No, I, I met Rob the other day, and we had a nice visit, and we talked about everything he's been doing, and I think he's going to be a great asset. To the planning department, and, uh, he'll work well with the board too, because they're familiar with.
Dennis called me last week and told me to do my homework.
Yep.
So I did, um. And, um, I, I initially had a list of things I was going to do, but I actually stopped short because the gentleman that I greatly respect and have a lot of admiration for on the planning board. Described you as the smartest man that he knows.
Oh, boy.
And, uh.
Wow, okay.
And then I ca- I, I spoke to one other person, um, who had nothing but rave reviews, so good luck, welcome to Bellingham, and I, I wish you nothing but success.
Thank you.
I'm good, you know, it's, uh, I don't have to ask much, you know, it's, I know Rob, uh, is definitely, um, it's, um. One of the greatest things I wanna see, um, it's a coming from the roots of Bellingham, I mean, it's, uh. He got the degree, he got education, he got the knowledge, and obviously, he's been getting involved over the years all around town, and, um, I'm pleased to actually, you know, it's, um. Um, being a subcommittee member, you know, it's, um, it, it's, I think it's gonna be a great addition to our town. In a different level, and I thank you.
Thank you.
My impression, uh, having been on the overlay district and a few others, um, having witnessed you firsthand, uh. I think one of the best compliments you can give someone is that they don't speak to hear themselves speak, that you've done a lot of listening, and that when you speak, uh, you've got something to say.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate the very kind words.
Yeah. So with that, uh.
That is my recommendation, so we take, uh.
I would take a vote.
Board chairman.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Robert Lucier to be our director of planning and engineering.
Second, first and second, just for clarity, Dennis, uh, when would this take effect and budget information?
Yep, um, Rob and I are gonna work on a startup date, obviously, he wants to give his employer a reasonable, uh, notice, so it will become effective. Once we can mutually agree on a date, but I'm sure it'll be, you know.
In the near term.
In the near term, absolutely, and we have made arrangements within the budget, as you know, we had a. Uh, a position transfer out of there, create the vacancy, and that's why we started to look.
So it's within the budget?
Yeah, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, Rob, welcome to being.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, everybody, I appreciate it, look forward to working with everyone.
Thank you for sitting, sitting through our entire meeting.
That's okay.
Uh, Hillary, you're next up with the vote on.
Yeah, I just need you to, um. It'll be posted on Friday.
Well, being passed around, entertain the motion to vote on February twenty-fourth and March fourth minutes, either separately or together.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I need the motion to approve the February twenty-fourth and April fourth minutes.
Second.
First and second, and all the other questions?
No.
Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor say aye, aye, opposed, one. Well, next up on the agenda is old business. I have one item. Um. I bring this up simply because I was out and I was cornered, cornered, I was. Asked about the cleanup activities, uh, we got emails about Earth Day, which is April twenty. Um, but it goes to, um. Are there any other takes or plans, we brought it up, but I wanted to just. Because like, watching, watching relative to, uh, kids in town, I know we, we have the account.
Uh, yeah.
I wanna say the person's name, because you all know him, but, uh, you just asked again.
Yeah.
That we could just more.
Actually, we met with the, um, the, uh, management team at the D P W last, uh, Thursday morning to talk about gearing that up as we bring. Uh, people on board, uh, to actually get that going, so the goal is to get that going this spring. Um, won't be until we start bringing in the summer help, but having a day a week where we commit them to a, you know, a, a section of town. And just staying on it, and I think, I think you're able to make some real good inroads, so.
Good, I'm glad.
We're, we're ready to start that up.
Can we get them like, uh, for, for safety purposes, like I know when I brought it up last year, that was a big thing, at least a dedicated truck.
Yep.
To them, so with the flashing lights and everything.
Supervision, of course, we'll outfit them properly, and wanna make sure we get the, the gloves that can't be penetrated by.
Well, obviously, if there, if there's something like that, you know, it's probably gonna be the same thing as like what we do with Earth Day.
Yep.
You know, your, your market, your call, you know, police or, or.
Yeah, and they'll, they'll have pickers and things like that to pick these things up, so, uh, like, that is the goal, we're gonna. Hit that hard, um, in the spring, I know it's.
That'll be good.
In the spring, it's the worst, because the snow's gone, the little snowy hat, and it's just, it's everywhere.
And our sweepers will be out soon too, doing the road, but it's what's on the side of the road.
Yep.
Um, I spoke to Jesse, uh, Riddle, our D P W director earlier, um, the end of last week.
He's on it.
Jesse, so you can, Jesse chime in if you would, there was a question, he said about that the state was in regarding the four lights. And they were adjusting the cycle, so Jesse, my question was whether, uh, the state assessed them and hasn't changed them? Or if changes were made, because I was at the V F W, uh, yesterday, and, uh, you know, was just counting off how long it took. Once the Senate Street traffic cleared, and, uh, I counted up thirty seconds, and the cars cleared after about seven or eight. Um, so it was a question as to whether the states adjusted the lights already, and if you're comfortable that the changes, if they were made, are appropriate.
Yeah, a- and that's a great question, um, so actually, that's something that we have our, um, uh, it's one of the contractors in town, uh, they're performing mitigation work in that area. Um, that is something that, that we, we did request, they take a look at, uh, adjustments were made, however, we have not had our final walkthrough on that just yet. Uh, we will, uh, revisit, I know previously they were cycling, even when cars were not staging in the area. Uh, it does appear that that has been modified, however, the, uh, sequencing on the time, uh, was, was not, uh, further evaluated, it, it seemed. At least at the time while I was there, it seemed like it was adequate, however, if there are concerns, we can certainly revisit that before that's finalized. However, if there are concerns, we can certainly revisit that before that's finalized.
What the hell, I just thought it was odd that.
Yeah.
Um. Seemed like for the thoroughfare that's South Main Street, there should be less stops. But I also know that the people who are watching, the reason I was put in there was because of all of the construction, that we don't even have people in the homes yet. Uh, it's more for a lot of the future.
Right.
Yeah. Uh, anything on the new business? Uh, administrator's report you provided.
Just one, one item, since we have Jesse on, uh let him uh present it, Jesse, the uh, I know the North Main Street bids came in, and they came in. Uh, with, well within budget, maybe you can just talk a little bit about that project, but it's gonna begin.
Yeah, absolutely, so yes, we were able to to recently open bids for the North Main Mill and pave project. Uh, we anticipate construction from the limits of the previous construction site at uh the town center, all the way through Hartford Avenue. Uh, this this project will be uh again, a complete um mill and pave, meaning we're gonna take down approximately two inches of pavement. And uh and add two inches on top of that, so it's gonna be quite the the project uh to continue on with the positive paving that we've had. Uh, all the way from Douglas Shrive through the town center, so we're gonna continue on uh up north. Bids came in about half of what we were expecting, so it was fantastic to see very uh competitive numbers come through and uh. Glad to see this this project moving forward.
Yep, Jesse's gonna be joining us virtually, uh probably in April to talk a little bit about the schedule as far as projects that we have coming on.
Did you have one question to Jesse, uh is there any chance, I I would have gotten just a a couple phone calls in regards to Box Pond Road? The condition of of that, is there any chance of possibly getting some, somebody down there just to take a look at it?
Yeah, absolutely, and that's a great question, uh we've actually received a a number of emails, especially uh within the last few weeks. Um, I I've given a very standard response that this will be vetted by the committee. Uh, preliminary uh discussions were to have North Main, um you know, paved this year with the bids coming in as favorable as they did. Uh, we're certainly gonna be discussing next roadways to be paved, um but yeah, certainly, uh Box Pond has been a very. Um, you know, uh it it's been a hot item of contention, and it's certainly something we'll discuss with the committee, but that that would be a fantastic candidate, actually. Sahan uh was with me earlier today when we uh talked about Box Pond, so uh how timely that that it came up.
That's all I have, thank you, Jesse.
And now, also, uh, Mr. Dennis, and it's um, Jesse, can I mention that, you know, it's obviously, you know, you're gonna put a list together, you know, it's um. The prioritizing, all the um, all the roads are uh gonna be, uh need attention immediately.
Absolutely, so what we're planning to do, um there there's a number of roads in town that could use, uh you know, some some work. So what we're gonna do is compile a list of the one hundred worst roads in town and prioritize, you know, based on volume of traffic that passes through and. And the severity of the road at that time, uh we're we're gonna prioritize uh those that would be the best candidates for for repair for the season.
Is it too much to ask that it shared with the board, please?
Oh, ab- absolutely, yes, yeah, great question, thank you.
There was a point, I think we're going back seven or eight years, when the town dedicated five million dollars as part of a exclusion?
No, it was a, yeah, pay for some taxation.
Taxation, okay, um and then that took several years to burn through that money too, so there's only so many. Projects.
No, I I I totally understand, I just.
So, and also, one more thing, that's name, Mr. Chair, and uh actually, we were discussing this morning, you know, Beth was there too. And um so one of the things actually Jesse's gonna be looking at with D P W going forward, and uh they're gonna find a um. Proper ways, maybe looking at different avenues, and then when we we um, when we, when we redo these roads, when we repave them. So they're gonna maybe use a different methods, and then uh properly drain it so forth and so on, and then we wanna have these problems moving forward.
That's good.
Had a little different uh different angle to it, on the assessment.
I think that's it.
Yeah, that's it.
I believe he's having satisfied our agenda and sent motion to adjourn.
So much.
First and second.
You guys, I'm just gonna flip a coin.
He's got more, he's got more, you're already, just give it to Sahan.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, thank you everyone for attending, either in person, via Zoom, or.